Everyone to the July thirty first Winchester Planning Board Meeting. We are being recorded both via WinCam, thank you very much WinCam and via Zoom. If you don't wish to appear on the recording, please turn your video and your microphones off. We are going through Zoom bomber protocol, meaning that most people will not be able to unmute themselves. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and we will get you if that's an appropriate point of our conversation. We still have a lot of people coming in. Why don't we do roll call vote? Sally Dale?
Present.
Carrie Leighton?
Present. Oh, Nick can't hear.
Nick can't hear. Nick can't hear.
He has his hand up and he was pointing at his ear.
Okay.
Unmute. I'm asking him to unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nick. You should have been.
Okay, now it's now it's working.
All better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great.
So Nick, are you here?
I am. I'm present.
And I Ching Scott?
Present.
And I Dejris, I'm president, I'm the chair. We're joined today by our recording secretary Nancy Pocari and a bunch of other people, one of whom has left presumably because they could not zoom bomb us. Okay, so what we have before us is a discussion as to what to do about our town planner. For recap for those in the audience on WinCam is the search committee advanced two candidates forward for interview by the board in our last round of interviews. We interviewed both of them and then we had a discussion last Tuesday about selecting one of those candidates to be our next town planner. I believe the consensus was that the our one candidate Jenny DeGranda was didn't was not a good fit for our town. And there was insurable discussion about the other candidate, Taylor Herman. And we decided that we would come back and meet again today. In the interim, the planning board has received an email from Mr. Herman indicating that he would be interested in applying for our temporary planner position for a three month basis, no more than three days, maximum of three days per week. And that the he would be interested in that position for three months and that arrangement could be repeated for another three months and that or be terminated. And essentially there was no indication that accepting that offer or offering him that would give him any sort of leg up on a town planner position. So I can put that on the screen if that would make sense.
I think it's good. Just look at the fine points of his wording.
And then make sure screen up right. Let's see if this is the right window. Okay, because everyone's seeing the email.
Answered it.
Yeah, it's not the whole thing. You see the whole thing?
It's very zoomed in.
It's very small or large?
It's large type and it's cut off on the right hand side.
Okay, then I'm just gonna stop sharing and I'll share my screen and we'll see what happens on. Okay, maybe I can't show my screen.
Sometimes you can do view options fit to window.
Well, that doesn't do it. Right now, right now, it has decided that it's just gonna not allow me to unshare and it has frozen everything. Great.
It's a it's a feature.
I'm gonna have to restart Zoom on my box. Hold on a sec, folks. Okay, I can't hear anyone and I can't see anyone.
We can hear you.
Oh wait, now you've appeared. Okay, I think it still thinks I'm sharing. Oh, now it stopped sharing. So just so that doesn't happen again, I'm gonna try. Zoom and my computer do not like each other. Let's try something else. So in the meantime, Sally and I met with Beth Rudolph, the town manager and Mark Tugid, assistant town manager to discuss about how we would handle funding positions and what the towns practices and temporary positions. So let me try sharing the entire desktop and maybe that will get you. Okay, so now can you see this window?
Yeah.
If I make it bigger, is that readable?
Yes. Okay, that's great.
So the key provision is that I'll highlight this agreement here. He's offering, and this is something we could negotiate, obviously, a three month contract guaranteeing he would work for a maximum three full days at the conclusion of the term. Three month cycles, I can be hired for the permanent position or it can be terminated altogether. So no expectation from either side as that this would be a permanent sort of arrangement. The town is interested in hiring at less than nineteen and a half hours because that's what triggers health benefits. And that would certainly work within the three full workdays. We also asked the town about longevity and they tend not to have these reoccurring temporary sort of pseudo contracts. But this is out of ordinary circumstance, so I need to reach out to the town controller tomorrow, she's apparently on vacation, and discuss whether this is something that they would be, that she will be comfortable doing. So the proposition as it stands, I don't think that, I don't know if the recurring three month contract is actually possible, but I will know that shortly when that's.
Well, it's it's an at will situation which can be terminated at the end of three months or it can continue. It I mean,
Yes.
And it gives it gives him a little bit of security.
Yeah, I just don't know. The town has has some policies as to whether they would they would do this. And it's it's up to the controller to make a decision as to whether this this renewing after three months for another three months is actually something the town is willing to do.
And and the issue underlying that is having to do with Department of Labor labor regulations about being a serial temp and whether the violation of labor law.
Yeah, so that's that's.
One question is, did you guys look at the alternative, which is if we hired him full time? What what it does a six month period look like and how complicated would it be should there be determination say from our side that it's not a good fit?
Well, I didn't look at that because this board hasn't really put out all the parameters. So one of the things that was discussed at last Tuesday's meeting was the idea of reopening the search.
I think we need to reopen the search.
So so let's let's first write down what the possibility is before the board and vote on them. So one option is to reopen the search. Let's call that option one. And if we reopen the search, then option one A would be to contemplate hiring Taylor at the in the temporary position. The other option is to, one B is to not hire anyone and just keep the search open. Option two would be to hire Taylor at full town planner with probationary period. Is there another option that I'm missing?
So you said the choices are hire Taylor Herman as a temp and that would just be for ninety days and the possibility of renewal.
Now, why is it just for ninety days? I don't understand why a temp can be on an ongoing basis. If and if we have to after the first ninety days, just make it month to month or make it a normal temp arrangement so that it doesn't conflict with any kind of three month issues that I'm hearing.
Yeah, so there's also a question. The town doesn't like to have temp workers for extended periods of time because then they're like, why aren't they a permanent worker? So I think there's a there's a balance between what the town is comfortable in doing and also having to present to the personnel board and saying, yeah, we they're just a temp. But we're gonna we're gonna have them on the books for six to nine months, in which case personnel might say that's not a temp position. So I think that's where the town's coming from.
I mean, we gotta make it clear that we are under dire circumstances in terms of needing help and we've we've foregone a salary to someone for way longer than we had expected.
I yes, so I I think that the 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 board needs to make a decision as to which path they wish to pursue. And then I can go in and discuss what the obstacles to that particular path and whether we can overcome them. I mean, these are still, Nick, that's a very good question, but it's a question that I haven't had a chance to speak with the controller about.
Sure, sure.
So I think really the board has to say, we want to go in this direction. And I think the key thing is we've got reopen the search, hire Taylor as a temp, reopen the search, don't hire Taylor as a temp, or hire Taylor as a full town planner with a probationary period. Is there another option to pursue? I'm gonna put up a window which which shows those just so that we can keep things straight. Okay, I was going to try to do that. I'm text editor.
While you're doing that, it it probably is an argument that the reason we need the temp longer is that it's a particularly tight market in the United States right now for town planners. And so that it will take us longer to hire a permanent planner under that logic. And that we would desperately need a temporary planner in the meantime. Not just for three months, but to cover the entire period between now and when we would hire a permanent planner.
Okay, are there any other? I'm just gonna. Are there any up up on top here? Are there any other?
Do we have a one, one point two there? So one point two would be just reopen search and no no hire no one, right?
I don't know how you spell no one, this is. How about that? Okay.
I can just report, having checked the town website, that neither the temporary nor the full time position is currently posted.
That's correct. And Ellen has her hand up. Hold on a sec, Ellen. I didn't see you. Let me add up. You can't speak because you are not granted special privileges. I'll just ask you to unmute so that please unmute yourself and.
Hi?
Hi?
Oh, hi, sorry. Oh, sorry. I I just was wondering why what the discussion was where last week, I guess. Obviously, there are some issues. Not everyone, I mean, you didn't you didn't want to offer him the 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 full time job. I just wondered what that process was.
There was a lot of discussion. There are certainly some people who want to. I think it all came down to whether or not his, he has no formal planning training.
Okay.
And his, he did have a an internship at the Boston Public Development Agency. But it wasn't, it wasn't like a full in-depth internship internship where he spends three or four months onsite and then does work. It was a so that that I think is the main issue is the lack of that.
Of the actual planning experience.
Formal planning training. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so is there a is there an option three?
Wait, we had three.
How come the the postings keep falling off the website? It seems.
Because they have they're put up for a certain amount of time. We all agreed on when they when we when we the board voted on the posting, we said they will be posted for this amount of time.
I mean, during during this meeting, I mean, can we make sure that they're?
The board decides they want to put the posting up, then yes, I'll make sure it's posted. But.
Well, the other options that we had pursued was not only keeping the search for the full time town planner with the proper qualifications on there, but we were looking at at tweaking the temporary town planning position so that it didn't communicate that it was just an assistant level. It's truly an experienced level and you were getting, we were getting assistant level resumes because they saw.
Very good.
Right, so we did talk about that. But let us let's try to focus back on what we're gonna be doing with. Is there a third option here? And then we're gonna discuss the options.
Well, the three are, oh, okay, the third option.
Is there a third option?
No, okay, I see. I see these as as.
There's, yeah, I why don't I just turn these into three options? So one will be reopen search and hire Taylor's temp. Let's call this.
Reopens, two is just reopen search and don't hire Taylor. And the third option on front of us is.
And so this would be, we would say reopen both full and temp searches. And those would be reopen full position.
Reopen full and temp searches.
And then we would simply hire Taylor as full. Okay.
Which probationary and it was unclear to me if probationary is three or six, and I think we might be able to determine that ourselves.
Okay.
It's not clear in the town personnel handbook.
Maybe to help us see this too is that for one, we would get somebody at nineteen and a half hours, for three, we would get somebody at forty hours.
Yep. Nineteen and a half hours for ninety days. And it and we're pending confirmation from the controller as to.
Oh, it's not forty?
It's up in thirty five. I don't know why. It's just, as far as I know, it's thirty five. I'm gonna leave it at that. That was my understanding. Those are the hours Brian had. So.
So going back, going back to oh, never mind, I'll just drop it.
So let's 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 move through. These are our three options and let's, why don't we start talking about option one? And what are the pros of option one? And if we just want to go around and people can give me.
Yeah, yeah. Can I can I maybe start by saying, could we maybe, the reason why I would rule out option three are for the reasons that you had mentioned, Dej, that I'm looking at our ta- our position that we did write and it was the minimum qualifications were master's degree in planning or a related field and three to five years' experience in municipal planning. So the first part, he does have a master's degree in a related field, but the three to five years' experience, I think he falls short of three.
The bottom of this was something.
And and then so because of that, those minimum qualifications haven't been met. I understand that it would be really helpful to have somebody for three, five hours a week for the next six months because the six months are gonna be pretty intense for us. So we could have, you know, by discretionary kind of vote here, the minimum qualifications can be waived in some ways here. But it's it's tight, right? It's close in that it's not met. That's that's my thought about three. So if anybody else has that, maybe we can just figure out how to how to get rid of that. But also I would I would vote for one because I do think that we need somebody ASAP. And he is qualified to do a lot of these things that we do need to do really quickly. But I haven't ruled out three completely.
Right, so just to keep this, can we can we just like take one of it? Is it possible to just go through one at a time or?
Yeah, we can go around the table on each one. Is that what you're saying?
I'm trying to under, you know, sort of a a clear way of winnowing these down would be to say, yeah, everyone go around and say why they like one, why they dislike one. And then we can, then we can compare them head to head later on because, so what I've got from I Ching is that one provides us immediate help.
And he, I think he has the skill set to do that.
And skill set. Okay. Uh, let's see who's next. I'm just gonna randomly guess. Carrie? We're just talking about one.
My, just about one, so keeping the search open and giving him the temp position. My concern is that we're getting deeper into the three A process and a few of our technical projects and we risk interrupting a flow we'll establish with him with a new person coming in. I mean, I guess hopefully that person has better technical expertise and can fold in, but what's the transition look like? If he's temporary and then we hire a full time person, but we also had a like, what's the transition allowance for having potentially three people?
How did we get to three people?
Well, do are we still looking for, we're looking for the full time person? Is there not an assistant but a?
We don't have an assistant yet.
That position's gone.
No, no, we don't have that as a position to look for. That's not an available position to us.
That's right. It has not been put into the fiscal twenty four budget. It might go into the fiscal twenty five budget.
Okay, so how will this handoff go?
Right.
And then so could we have a full time as well as a temp at the same time?
If we were so lucky.
Yeah.
We would, we would. So the question is risk disruption and continuity if we get a full time planner. Okay. Nick?
And.
Oh, sorry, you're not done?
Oh, Carrie had one more thing.
I'm sorry, Carrie. Go ahead. I can't see.
I just, I just think, I mean, I was, I was really impressed. I mean, one, I think he clearly watched the meeting, you know, he paid attention, he heard our concerns and he offered an alternative, like all of this is sort of building my confidence in him. And and I totally appreciate the concerns that we have and and but I handing this off mid-year and expecting sort of everything, I I it's, this is a tricky, it's a tricky framework. Number one's a tricky framework because where he's gonna be holding a lot of knowledge by the time we get through another search process.
So I don't understand, Carrie. Are you saying that we can't have? And I I don't know what the process is, but we can't have a temp and a full time at the same time. And you're saying that that might be
Well, we don't have the budget for two positions.
We have. We do if we if we.
If we need that transition, we would just need that transition, right?
So.
I'm just worried it'll be like, we'll be transitioning, you know, we really have to have this pulled together for spring meeting. So if we get him here sometime in August, it's a three month probationary period, September, October, November. I don't know, I just.
So so let me give you a little bit of insight on the on the funding disposition. So we have one month of salary which has not been spent. So that's our buffer. It's a month at a full hundred and nineteen thousand or whatever Brian's salary was. As long as we can fund both, we can have overlapping positions as long as we keep it, we 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 can use that money as a buffer and as the temporary person is really only there during that transition period. If we find that we need them longer, we would most likely have to go to FinCom and ask for some emergency emergency funds. So I think the I can get to that in my point, the 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 when my concern, I'll get, I'll talk about my concerns when we get to my spot. But the funds are there in a way. So and we would not be paying this person, the temp person at the same salary as the full planner, so that would still give us extra money in our budget. So Carrie, are you done with yours and we can move on?
Yeah, please move on.
Nick, what do you think of?
Well, number one, so I I think my feeling fundamentally is that this is a very important decision for the long term. I think that the full time position needs to be someone with depth of experience in law, in the law and able to stand up to town meeting. Able to execute tasks like writing an opinion. And I, so I'm, I'm inclined to reopen the full position search. But I realize that we desperately need someone to help us who's enthusiastic and can do this. I I would not want to go to three just because we're trying to get to thirty five hours. If we need thirty five hours, we should ask for thirty five hours for this guy or or, you know, and and deal with the the health insurance. It's gonna be this, it's gonna be the same or less money to deal with it that way than to than to hire them full time.
Say that again, Nick.
Yeah, no, I I I think that if if we were, if I would not go to three to get the thirty five hours. I think that if we want thirty five hours, we should we should see if we can get the temp up to thirty five hours and address whatever health insurance issues we have to address to do that with the temp position. So I would, I would tend toward going with scenario number one. For those reasons, for the main reason is that the long term position is very important and responsible and it's a decision that's gonna impact us for you know, maybe ten years going forward.
And he's not available for full time unless we bring him in as.
Good point. That's a, that's a good point, but he's built for twenty four hours.
Of three full workdays.
Right.
And and three full workdays would put him into the number of hours that by law you receive pension and medical and the town was talking about if you come in as a temp over a certain number of hours that you can get medical, but you would don't get pension unless you're up to the full thirty five point five on a permanently funded basis.
Does Brian have a pension? I mean, how does that, how does that work? I mean?
Yeah, it's 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 a forty, 401K or whatever it is. If you're at a.
401K, just we just pay the 401K to the guy. I mean.
For some reason, Nick, your screen says Sally Dale on mine. That's really weird.
It does say Sally Dale.
Nick? So Nick, the town is has substantial concerns about hiring a temp worker at the level which gets them.
Okay. Okay.
And so if we can make a case for it. Then let's make a case for it, but there are the town, there are cons, it's the temp problem.
Right, I understood, I mean, I guess we can try to make the case, I mean, and, and, but. I, I think that the permanent position is, is a very important position that we need to take. With a great deal of. Gravity and, and, and uh, you know, in terms of the experience that, that. That we should see in that person.
Okay. Um. Let's see, uh, Nick, are you, are you done?
I started, yep.
Okay, great. I actually can see you, I can't see anyone else for some reason, even though you're called Sally, uh. Let's see, uh, Sally, speaking of which, Sally, what's your position on number one?
On number one, um, I do agree that if the board feels that Taylor is not qualified. For the full-time town planner position, that we should keep the position listing open. Um, and I also agree with the proposition. Of bringing him in as a temporary town planner. Um, and I would like us to do that for the maximum number of hours per week that he's available. Um, and we would do that for n- the ninety days. Um, uh. I'm not sure why ninety days is the number, um, but it seems to be the number that's on the table. Um, I would rather if we could do that for like six months, cuz that would get us. August, September, October, November, December, January, it would get us into February.
So, just say Sally, the, the three months is his offer, we can counteroffer.
Oh, I see, okay, that if, that is that, and, and, and nonetheless, when you're a temp. Um, it, it's, it's totally at will, if we don't like what he's doing. Then we give him respectful notice that it's not working out. Um, but uh, to me, it would be great if, if he can work up to three full working days per week, and let's call that twenty-four hours or whatever. Um, it's certainly not thirty-five, which is the trigger for full-time. Um, so. Uh, and did he say in his letter at least?
He's looking for a three-month contract, so this is not a, so this is not a.
That's where the ninety days came from, okay, thank you, yes. No, I'm in favor of his proposal, if the board is not happy with the level of his qualifications for the full-town planner position. And I can honestly see why the board would feel that way. Um, I also can see why we could take a chance. And have robust supervision and benchmarks and, and training and onboarding, et cetera. So, I just don't want Taylor to not be taken um into consideration for either of those roles.
I just wanna clarify one thing, Sally, and that is, I don't know if in Taylor's offer, which of course we don't have to accept. I don't think he sees this as a contract, which can be, where if we say we don't like what he's doing, we can let him go. I mean, you described.
Terminated by either, there was that thing, it says for three months.
Well, three months, I think, I think we're supposed to guarantee the position.
Yeah, he said at the conclusion of the term, it can be, it can be terminated.
Okay, I see that now, um, so that's a question for town.
So I don't, if we were, I think, you know, if there is a minimum period. Then I don't know that there is an ability to, unless there's some egregious thing, I don't think we can simply say, we're letting you go.
Well, yeah, and the town, I don't think would ever do a thing where it would say um guaranteed.
I think that's, that's something to be worked out, but my, so let me, let me get into my.
But that's my.
Here, so. Um, I have, you know, I think Taylor would help us a lot on number one, I am concerned about his lack of. Actual planning expertise, um, my problems, my concerns, I should say, with the three-month is that. If after three months, uh, Taylor decides he doesn't want to continue with us, for whatever reason. Then we have lost that experience. And so one of the problems I have with this sort of three months and then three months is that. We make the assumption that after the first three months, he's gained the expertise, he's done the outreach, that he'll want to continue. And so it's quite possible, he may say, no, I, I, I've decided, I've got another job, it's permanent, I'm gonna move on. And then we will not have that continuity that I think Carrie was concerned about. So, I think um, under the assumption that we will be able to find a full-time planner in the next three months. Which is the assumption that we've been going on for six months.
I, is it, I mean, could it, could it be that we just? Don't like the idea of having an interim or a temporary planner, I mean, whoever the temporary is gonna be. Is gonna involve. You know, law, losing that experience, whatever experience they gain during the time that they're here.
I think the concern.
But that notwithstanding is I think we desperately need the help, I mean, we need some people to do legwork.
So, so the, 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 the concern I have is that Taylor seems like the perfect fit for outreach efforts. And it's that expertise that, so if we think of our, of our temporary planner as someone who is not going to be. So focused on these big projects, but is just gonna be doing. The lower-level things that are required. Then we're, there's no, you know. I think we have to put our expectations of what that temporary person will do, we have to lower them so that if they leave at any time. There isn't this um. Issue with continuity of, of knowledge and experience. So, when we look at Taylor Herman, what I see Taylor as, what he excels at is his outreach, and if he were to step in as temporary. In the temporary position, I would want him to do outreach, but all of a sudden now we become dependent upon that. And if he chooses to leave, then we have a major setback, so those are my concerns, I really don't know how to resolve those, unless, you know. We just say whoever we hire, and I don't know if Taylor Herman would want to come on in a position where we're not using those. Those, his particular specialties, right, if we just say, we want you to be here to. You know, go over the zoning, uh, you know, go over the ZBA petitions, go over the CBD petitions, meet with developers.
I think he, I think he would want that experience, I think that, I think that he would wanna have the planner experience, I think that's part of what this offers for him is a, an opportunity. To really get some experience under his belt that he hasn't had before, I, I think it would be a mistake. I mean, it would do him a disservice to say, you're just gonna work on this and we're not gonna, you're not gonna get exposure to, you know, the other things. I, I, I think that he should have the full range of exposure and ability, you know, ability to experience the, the full position. Um, and, and, you know, but he would obviously. I, I mean, the bottom line is that we need someone, and we need them. We need them three months ago, basically.
I, I. To the choir here, Nick, I'm looking at, um, you know, but again, if this board is, if, if, if we. Say, okay, we're gonna dump you into the full thing, but note that in our, in our posting for the temporary planner. We did not give them the full range of duties that the full plan had.
But we did.
Although I see.
But we could give the plant, the temporary um, a primary focus on outreach, because that's one of our biggest deliverables. And it happens to be his specialty at this time.
Right, I think so, so, yeah, I.
And, and how, would, you know. Getting back to Carrie's concern and my concern about continuity of knowledge, how do we handle that?
Seems like it's a risk with anyone, that that, that could be a possibility, we could hire a full-time person, they could, they could, you know, leave after three months. I, you know, I, I think there, there's an amount of risk, we just.
That's the risk you take, sure.
Right, and how, I, I, I'd like to know how this board is. About taking that risk.
Now, are we talking about option three now, Deahb?
No, I think we're, we're just talking about option one.
I mean, that risk is, we would be actively looking for that risk in option one, is my point, my point is that we're like sort of actively. Preparing to handoff in the middle of the three A process, and with him being. Kind of an expert in outreach, I mean, we talk about going in front of town meeting and being successful, that's just a relationships game, you know, it's sort of like if he's spent a bunch of time. Doing outreach to town meeting members to make sure that they've brought their, brought their districts to events, so that, you know, the constituents understand and the town meeting members are engaged. And then we switch that person last minute, I think we're at bigger risk for spring town meeting.
The best-case scenario might be, though, that we, we um go with option one. Hire Taylor and that we uh are pleased with what he does and he continues, and then we get to hire him for number three, right? I mean, that, that might then be the best.
Uh, yeah, no, I, I agree, I just think that I, I, I. We put our weight behind him or we don't, kind of.
So maybe, maybe we should look at the other two options, and then just because I think, I think. Option number two, I, I, I'm getting, I'm guessing most people are not in favor of it. Cuz that would mean we don't hire anyone until we find, we don't hire.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem like very many people are applying, especially since the, the positions are.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna suggest that we just hire an admin assistant if we can't get anyone for the temp, and just get someone in the door that can, that can do the, the basic. That can do something for us, that can work with Sally, that can work with all of us.
Yeah, see, most of the, I'm thinking about most of the time that, that. Most of the things that take up my time and Sally's time. And it's not, it's not administrative.
Okay, so, so we do need someone who's got experience, I mean.
Yeah, we need someone to sit down and be able to talk with someone about how do you put a CBD application in, and what are the requirements? And so I don't get email from developers saying, hey, I wanna, how do I do a CBD application? So those are the things that, you know, some who can sit down with them and, and work through the issues and understands. What an application actually looks like, so there's a, there's that sort of experience.
Um, Deahb, you mentioned a fourth possibility, which is that, um. It's, it's possibility number one, or it's option number one. That um, we would at some point decide to. Consider Taylor for possibility number three.
Well, I think that, that, let's, so. So here's the, the, the problem is right here. Oppos- proposition number one says we reopen the full position search. So, at some point, you know, we may decide, you know, these, these two things are going on simultaneously. And I don't think it's fair to Taylor to say. There's a possibility we might offer you this job if you're good enough, but in the meantime, we're actually searching for someone who's going to take it. So I think we have to discuss what the, you know, how those two things work together. So, if we can, let's just, you know, maybe there's a, another one that we can put in, which was. Um.
Well.
I think the va- the, the value proposition for Taylor is that he's gonna get some pretty good experience. On a hands-on level with a real community, you know, doing this work. Um, and. Yeah, I, I mean. If we do one, yeah, we, 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 we can't promise him the full-time position.
I mean, let's, let's, you know, if, if I'm in Taylor's position, and I'm not, but if I'm in his position, I would say, I'm looking for a full-time position. If you can't guarantee, if, you know, I can play, I can show you how good I am for as many months as you have me as temp. But if I don't see some commitment from the town to say, we are going to realistically consider you for that full position. You know, having this sitting on going at the same time implies that there's a good possibility he's not gonna get it, and that he may decide to move on. But let's, let's, um, let's just deal with number two, um, are there, is there anyone in favor of number two?
Well, I don't think we should um do number two until we come to a decision about Taylor. Because w- we wouldn't open the temp search if we're thinking about bringing Taylor in for the temp. And if we're concerned about continuity and we're concerned about him. Um, bringing himself as a candidate to some other place, then.
Well, well, let's, let's move on to number three then.
Okay, my, my um perspective of number three has changed when you add four, because four sounds like. We are doing three, but at nineteen and a half hours per week, right? He has a probationary period in some ways. Um, and then we are just, we're just watching to see if he's ready for the full-town planning position. Is that how you see it, Deahb?
That would be my assumption from, if we hire him and we don't do a search, I should say search for full, not full search.
And that's what he said in his my preference paragraph, he said, get to know me better and increase your capacity. While you continue to evaluate your options. So one thing would be to.
Evaluate your options means that we could go out for the full position.
That sounds like what it, that, that's, that's what it sounds like to me, Nick.
It sounds like that he's actually saying something like one, evaluating your full options means we reopen the full search. But we've, we've all discussed the risks that go along with that. So, the question is, so we, we know it, we know.
I mean, maybe in the meantime, we'll have an assistant, um. We'll, we'll, we'll be able to fund that, we don't know that, we don't know.
We don't actually get to hire someone until July first of next year.
Twenty twenty-five.
That's one of the, so.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four, if it's in the twenty twenty-five budget.
So let's, let's talk about, let's just go full bore into number three. And talk about what, how the board feels about hiring Taylor and believing that he can move up. In experience to getting the full town planner. Position that we're looking at.
So, how long is the probationary period? Is it the year until the budget change?
No, probations can be, I, according to what's in the town personnel manual, I think it says six months. But I think that we, as the supervisory board, can specify performance reviews and feedback sessions. At some frequency that we determine will be most productive, it could be every six weeks, it could be every three months.
I, I think six months is pretty standard.
Help us with, with getting him on the ground, it will certainly help with know me better, increase your capacity, evaluate your options.
Okay, so it is, I'm assuming that spring town meeting is in April, that would be eight months from now, right? So, I mean, that's a huge, like, period where we can evaluate and say. How did he perform at town meeting, you know, what was the result, but that's eight months from now, so is there. There might be some kind of flexibility in that, right? When we can see, I mean, that, that's what we're, that's the goalpost right there.
Well, let's, let's, um. So. If we don't know how well he's doing, if he's doing so poorly at six months. That we would consider letting him go, then we probably don't want him to be coming in front of town meeting.
So that would be February then, right? So, and then we would be just like, hi, you know, we all would be so slammed with work then.
That's right. You can just, just get him on board in a full-time role, manage him well, onboard him well. Understand that he's coming in at the lower end of the pay grade, and he's got a lot to learn. And move as professionally as we can towards town meeting.
So let's, so the key question here, I think, is what is the actual length of probation? And, you know, I think that we can all agree that this is going to be a really difficult job to step into. And, you know, one might say that six months is a really short time for probation. Um, probation.
Also in favor of, of a six-week and a three-months um check-in.
Sure, but I think that, that um, we can certainly do that, I think that we'll be having a daily check-in for a while. I think contractually, the question is, if you go through a probationary period at six months. Do the um types of things that you. You know, there's a certain set of things you can talk about at a, at a probationary review. That maybe are different if you go to a full review. So what I don't know is what the HR department, whether it distinguishes between what you can actually um. Assess at a probationary versus a full review. So I don't know if anyone has any experience.
I do have experience with that, um, with the whole probationary thing, and um, when you hire somebody. You are very clear in the goals and objectives about what they need to do to get through probation, so it's like in school, they, they publish the um. The, I forget what it's called now, there's a checklist of things, if you wanna get an A plus, this is exactly what you need to do. The rubric. Um, and so giving him a rubric of what it means to pass your six-month probation. Um, and we could also say that if it comes to, um, it may. Of twenty-four, and town meeting has not gone well. Of twenty-four and town meeting has not gone well and et cetera. That, I mean, that's one of his rubrics is that this is all has to go well. No, 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 I, I, maybe I overstated it that way, but, I mean, when you have clear goals and expectations and.
No, I, I'm with you. I agree. I just think there's a lot of soft criteria that we're really hanging on and it's hard to evaluate.
Well, so maybe we can harden those up, but I'm saying that time is of the essence and I just think that we should take a leap. I don't think it's a very big leap.
So let's, so, so we can put in, I think what I'm getting from you Sally is there are some certain. Um, things that we can assess at a probationary period and then we have to. Switch over to what's in the performance plan, which we've created. And so at the end of a year, which would be in August, we would have a discussion as to whether. There, that's been a good fit for that whole year. I don't know that we can come in after probation, given someone a good probationary period. Um, and I think it's only fair to let them have, go to the next annual review, which.
I, I think so too. And in that probationary review, your things, what you didn't do well.
Yeah, and to be honest, I think annual reviews all have to occur in January now.
So you know what, I, six months from now, I forget that we're still in July, but six months from now is January.
Okay, so, so that might work in terms of that. And then if moving from probationary to full-up review, we would have another year. Um, unless we, so that's something to talk about HR to give us to underst-, I mean, there's obviously two sides of this. We want flexibility. Our employee wants stability, so let's try to be fair. So let me, um, so what we'd be talking about is for number three. Is that we would have a six-month probationary period and that would re-assess our relationship at the end of. I guess we'd have to reassess it at the end of January or January twenty twenty-five.
Year from hire, so. But it's a, it's a pretty special situation.
Well, let me find out what's possible from HR. Again, we have, we, you know, we think we're special and they think we're a pain in the ass, so. Um, let me, let me find out what, what sort of flexibility we have in this. Can we do? Annual review. In August, or I should say, uh, one year after hire.
One year after hire, correct.
Rather than one year, rather than in January.
And we would do the six-month review, six months after hire.
I think we would have to.
It might be that he doesn't come in. I don't, I don't know.
Uh, I think, I think we have to do a review in January and we could. And there's, there's all, there's some delay, is this playing bird is rarely on time with these things, so it's possible it would be six months regardless of when we wanted to do it. Okay, so that, I think those are the technicalities around number three. Um, is that we would hire him with the intention of hiring him permanently, but with his probationary period. And that our intention would be to provide him with the support to, um, move up in, in his standing as a planner. Uh, I did discuss with him, um, I discussed with him the board's concern about his lack of formal education. And that if we were to hire him, we would really would be pushing for him to get accreditation. And that was something he wholeheartedly agreed with. So I don't think there would be a problem with saying, okay, Taylor, you now have to go and do some. Continue education to bring yourself up to this, the level that we expect you to be at. So, that's number three. So I think we've had a general discussion on number three, but I don't think we've gone around and asked people how they feel. So why don't we go in the same order as before each him? How do you feel about number?
With the probationary six months and if, if we could reevaluate after one year of hire. Um, in addition to the one year, uh, in addition to the January twenty twenty-five, I think that would, that would be very helpful. Cause I, I do think that we need a long-term, um, investment from the planner, uh, from whoever's helping us to get through. Um, this fall and winter.
Okay. Uh, I don't forget who was next last time. Was it you, Carrie? Going the same order, Carrie.
I, I. I think this is better.
What are your concerns?
I mean, my concerns are potentially. Like, I, I, uh, I, I, I mean, I think the advantage, I, I, I just, to me, it's sort of like the, the probationary period, if it could be. Probationary period essentially sort of creates like a close working relationship, cause we check in with him carefully, which is great and we should do that anyway. And then it provides the off-ramp, right? Sort of like we have, you know, rather than sort of trying to like build the case, this wasn't working out. We kind of have that embedded. And, um, which I think is great, but I think the, the time point that's wiser for both groups is after the, after the spring town meeting, but. Um, so the, 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 you know, I mean, it's a January time point if we get everything done and he agrees to be hired today, but as of tomorrow, it's February regardless. Um, it's just a tricky time of year. Um, but I think full-time is better. I think hiring him sort of to, you know, really getting him time to get engaged. I sort of think he's gonna. I think he's, I think he's gonna be good. Like, I, I sort of think he's demonstrating like a sustained commitment to like making Winchester, you know. We're not, he's seeing sort of in real time that we're a really deliberative group and I think that's probably helpful for his process. And I think if he accepts the position, I'm, I'm not super worried about. Option three, so I don't have any. It's, I think that's probably our best one.
So can I, can I pose a, 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 oh, I don't know what I'm gonna pose, but. So, and you're concerned about probationary period and getting to town meeting. I think one of the benefits of being able to do that probation in January. Is if things aren't going well, there's a chance to fix things. And so we could.
No, no, I agree. And hopefully, but that should be a normal check-in over the first year anyway, with any new hire that you're hoping to keep long-term, so.
What, what is it? So again, trying to go back, extending the probation past town meeting. What does that give us about a six-month dozen? I guess I didn't understand that part of your concern.
I think we're all gonna feel really messy in January, February, cause it's gonna be ramping up to town meeting. We're gonna be parsing language and like sort of crunching the data and the. The parcels and how do we, you know, we're gonna be trying to fit in the outreach activities and it's gonna, I think at the end of the town meeting. We'll have sort of his complete effort and our complete sort of effort and we'll be able to sort of stand together and be like, where did, where could we have done better? And, and was there anything in your work that was actually an obstacle to success? Where I think it's gonna be very intensely in process in January, February and. I think that's a time.
Okay, so it's, it's more like, um, there's just no time.
I just think it's a, it's gonna be, it's just, it's just gonna be an intense minute.
Right, okay, so.
It could be great. I mean, if he shines then, then he'll, he'll shine air more, but, um, I just think.
That's spelled.
And also from, from our sort of courtesy to him, if we're sort of like, let's see how you do on this project. It'd be nice if he decides to continue applying for planner. If we don't sort of kill the dream for him and he applies to the next job, it'd be nice for him to sort of have that completed. I saw them through the three A process. As opposed to kind of getting off-ramped right before it all starts to fruition.
Um, okay, next is Nick.
I guess my response to three is sort of the, the flip side of how I felt about one and that's still. Um, wanting, I, I guess wanting to explore our options, wanting to see someone with. Uh, some of the deep experience, um. I think the conservation commission recently hired Elaine Breland and I mean, she has legal experience, uh, you know, experience, um. With the law, with the regulations, uh, and so I, I, I guess. I'm still hoping that we can. Find someone that has this deep experience that can sort of hit the ground running. Uh, but being fully cognizant of the fact that we need some help right away. Um, so I think if we're gonna take a risk, the risk that I would be more comfortable with. Um. Is being able to explore our options, uh, and, and, but, but hope that we can. Make it work for Taylor as well, to the extent that.
Okay.
Might be possible.
I just wanna note that Elaine has been in this field for thirty years, so.
She's been doing a full-time job for a really long time on part-time pay and what they did was finally correct her position to fully sort of compensate what we're. Have, have volunteer efforts.
And she's a highly experienced conservation administrator.
Town, I think since eighteen fifty-seven, I think she's been.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, plus or minus. I love Elaine.
Um.
We all do.
Elaine's not, not, definitely not that old. She's spry, she's young, like we all are.
Try keeping up with her on a conservation walk. Oh, whoa.
Oh, good lord, no. That's okay, thank you. I, I went up the stairs this morning, that's my exercise. Who's left? Uh, Sally, number three.
So, one of the things that strikes me is if we bring him in as a full-time town planner. Um, and there's quite a range of pay and there's plenty of opportunities for him to grow in the job. And if we get to, you know, May, June of next year. And he's done a great job, but we really want a really seriously, like an Elaine Reeland level town planner, right? Um, we ask him if he would be willing to be the assistant planner for the same pay, because the ranges overlap, okay? And, um, it makes it more appealing to planner candidates to come in to a planning department. That already has, um, a person with their, you know, feet on the ground and they're, they're oriented by virtue of nine months or so. And they get to supervise them or use them or benefit from them. So if he is here for a year or nine months and it's working out great. And we decide we really need to fill the town planner position. We get the funding from spring town meeting to fill the assistant planner position. We use the pay that he's getting. We use the, the salary from that position to pay him the pay he's getting and fill and continue to, at that point, relaunch the town planner position. With the added incentive of the fact that it's, it's a department of two people.
So, Sally, I understand what you're getting at. Can you provide? Some sort of response to FinCom saying. Why did you need to hire him at the full-town planner if he's only good enough for assistant town planner?
Because the assistant town planner position is not open right now. It is not funded right now, but he is somebody who would. A, be very able to learn to be a great town planner in this town if we're willing to give him. At least the one year, if not the two or the seven or the nine, right?
I think we have to be careful that he doesn't feel like he's being demoted at the, at the.
Well, that would be the case. And, and if that's the case, then we would just say he didn't work out and we have to find a different person to be an assistant town planner. And to be a town planner. I'm just trying to gather a little momentum here and not lose institutional knowledge.
I mean, if he's the temp, we could try to put him into the assistant planner and that would be less of a, of a demotion.
Next spring, next July.
Yeah, we'd have to wait until July. So here's my concern is that if we're hiring him for the full-town planner role. We are stating that he is capable of doing the full-town planner role. And so unless we come back and, and tell FinCom or the rest of the town that, no, he's actually not good enough. He hasn't been doing the full-town planner role. He's only been doing assistant town planner role. And they're gonna say, well, then why did you hire him? So I think there's a, I think there's, if we, if we.
We've been doing a nine-month search, Dea. Well, not nine.
I, Sally, I'm, 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 I'm playing devil's advocate here. I don't know how I feel about this. I'm just trying to figure out. So I think there is a concern, as Nick says, that, that. Giving a person the title of full-town planner, but saying, we only really think that you might be only good enough to be assistant, but we can't give you assistant because of bureaucracy. Versus hiring someone as full-town planner and they do a pretty decent job. And then you say, well, they actually didn't do as good a job as we'd hoped they would. I mean, that's the part where I think it's really hard to explain to someone, what is it about what they did that didn't rise to the level of full-town planner? When that's what's, we've wrote there. We're gonna write a position description for full-town planner.
We have a position description for full-town planner and we have a probationary period. And we would bring him in at a level in the pay grade that does, that recognizes that there's aspects that he needs to grow in. And we would give him very clear benchmarks and deliverables and targets to meet. To bring himself up to speed. Like, for instance, one of them is basically be able to answer almost any question about the Winchester zoning bylaw within three months.
Right, so.
Okay, that's like a specific benchmark.
Right, but that would be the same whether he came in with a degree in, in.
That's kind of a lot of pressure.
The way that you can do it, the way that you want to do it, Sally, is maybe instead of, uh, providing an assistant position, assistant planner position. Next spring, it's, it's really a planning director position that you're looking for and what Nick is describing too. I think that, you know, when we were writing this description, we were acknowledging that Brian had exceeded this. Um, he was more in a director position. And with Kelly Lenema, when she, she came before us, it was evident that she exceeded a lot of what this, this position was. Asking for in a minimum. And so I think if we were to make that case with Taylor, it would be instead of saying demote to assistant planner. It would be to hire or to, to advocate to the town that we need a planning director.
Level, right.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a, yes, that's very similar to what I'm proposing. It's just a. Creating a higher level position if we feel that.